Welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission. And today is the February 5, 2015, meeting. For all in attendance, please note that today's meeting is being live-streamed on the ncpc.gov website. And we do have a quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order. We will proceed without objection along with the agenda as has been publicly advertised. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman. And I'll just announce a few new appointments. Received a letter from Senator Ron Johnson of Wisconsin, who is the new chairman of the Committee on Homeland Security and Governmental Affairs, and he has designated Patrick Bailey, who is chief counsel for government affairs, as his first alternate, and Gabby Dodamo, who is deputy chief counsel, as his second alternate. From Mayor Bowser, it is her intent to reappoint her friend Arrington Dixon and to appoint a new Jeffrey Griffiths, who is to my right, as her mayor all appointees. And for Eric Shaw, the director of planning, as her first alternate, and Jennifer Steingasser, who we've known so well over the years, as her second alternate. Additionally, DC Council Chairman Phil Mendelson has designated Evan Cash. Evan, welcome. As his alternate. We welcome you all. Not everybody has gotten his... Some are here today but won't be voting just for paperwork issues, but we're happy to have everybody, for sure. We will schedule an orientation of sorts in due course. We'll work with your schedules to do that. We're pleased to have Bob Vogel sitting in today as well, from National Park Service. Agenda item number two is the report of the executive director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome to our new commissioners. I just have a few personnel notes to announce. After 13 years with the commission, urban design and plan review director Shane Detman left the agency to join the law firm of Holland and Knight, where he had accepted a land-use planner position. Shane served with the agency with great distinction during his tenure. He was responsible for developing our central files information system. He worked on the Monumental Core Framework Plan, and he also shepherded many of the major projects that were reviewed by the commission, including the Intelligence Community Campus at Bethesda, the Dwight D. Eisenhower Memorial, as well as the Martin Luther King Memorial. We wish Shane all the best and thank him for his service to the commission. We're also happy to announce that our former division director David Levy has returned to NCPC.
David?
David will serve as the acting director of urban design and plan review. David spent 10 years with the commission, and since departing NCPC in 2011, he worked at the DC Office of Planning and at the DC City Administrator's Office as their sustainability program manager. So, welcome back, David. Finally, we welcome Catalina Kalashan, who is interning with the Office of Public Engagement through April. Catalina is a second-year student at American University School of International Service.
Good. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Any questions for Mr. Acosta? Thank you, and we welcome everyone. Yes, we will miss Shane very much, and we are very happy to have David Levy return to Agenda item number three is the legislative update. Ms. Kyler?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, moving right along, is the consent calendar. We have just one item on it. That is the first-stage planned unit development. It's a consolidated PUD and related MAP amendments at square 1025E, 1048S, and reservations 129 and 299. Are there any questions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. That's passed unanimously. Agenda item number 5A is the Tour Bridge Modernization Project at the Bureau of Engraving and Printing. We have Ms. Lee. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The Department of the Treasury has submitted for preliminary review the Tour Bridge Modernization Project at the Bureau of Engraving and Printing BEP Main Building. Just a quick note, the applicant has provided some material sample boards for your reference. They are sitting by the... By the stage. Okay. The project is located in the southwest quadrant of Washington, DC. This area is an important destination for visitors and has several attractions. In close proximity to the north is the National Mall and Washington Monument and Independence Avenue. Also, to the immediate north is the U.S. Holocaust Memorial Museum and the historic Auditor's Building, original location of the BEP. The Title Basin and 15th Street, also known as Raoul Wallenberg Place, is to the west, and to the east is 14th Street, a major corridor that connects Virginia to downtown DC. The site is within walking distance to two metro stations, and generally, the majority of the pedestrian traffic comes from the north... No, I'm sorry. Comes from the north and from the east. Over the last 20 years, the commission has reviewed projects at the BEP facility or in the immediate vicinity. Most recently, the commission commented favorably on the concept design for the rehabilitation and addition to Tour Entrance Bridge in 2009. One more look at the project location. The BEP Main Building, the main facade, is along 15th Street. The entrance is above a monumental staircase, as you can see here in the picture. It has four projecting wings extending towards 14th Street. The scope of the project is focused on the Tour Entrance Bridge, highlighted in red, located within the middle courtyard, which provides a pedestrian connection from 14th Street to the Main Building, as you can see in the image. The courtyards are lower than the existing grade of 14th Street. The building was designed with two distinctively different facade treatments, which responded to the context and use. The building's 15th Street elevation has a classical-designed monumental colonnade and reflects the prominence of its location adjacent to the National Mall. The 14th Street facade reveals the industrial nature of the facility within the context of the Monumental Core in a more simplistic federalist style with low ornamentation, as you can see in this picture. The Main Building was constructed in 1914 in response to BEP having outgrown its offices in the Auditor's Building and the federal government's expanding industrial printing needs. The building is listed in the National Register of Historic Places. The Entrance Bridge was constructed at the same time as the Main Building and was originally an open elevated steel troughs walkway with a protected roof, and it was used only by employees. By 1916, it was also used by visitors due to the convenient location of transportation routes along 14th Street. In this picture, you can see the original corbelinear plaza with wide sidewalks along 14th Street. In the 1930s, as you can see in this image, the Tour Bridge was renovated and enclosed so that it could function as a visitor-reception area. Later on, in the 1940s, a trolley turnaround loop was constructed under 14th Street, and new staircases were added to link the sidewalk on 14th Street to a trolley station. In this image here, you can see the stairs that were added later. Today, the bridge remains as it was following the 1930 renovation. Now, I'm going to describe the project. The project includes exterior and interior goals. Some of the exterior goals include improved queuing, provide separation between tourists and general pedestrian traffic, provide opportunity for special events, restore the original corbelinear entrance, and create a visual identity at both pedestrian and vehicular levels. In terms of the interior space, the bureau wishes to reforgive exhibit spaces, enhance the quality of interior finishes, upgrade security procedures, improve visitor circulation, accommodate production tour ticket holders and visiting tourists, provide separate staging areas for VIP guests, and improve administrative support spaces. Moving to existing conditions, here you can see 14th Street, the corpseite planter, which was approved by NCPC in 96, the stairs that lead to a lower courtyard, which are no longer in use, the bridge entrance and security, the exhibit along the bridge, the mechanical equipment along the bridge headhouse, the historical film presentation area, restrooms, and then escalators to the production area tours. Those wishing to view the exhibits and experience the production tour must first acquire a ticket from a booth located along 15th Street during peak season. Upon receiving a ticket, visitors make their way to the public tour entrance on 14th Street. Queuing for the production tour takes place along the sidewalk, and visitors are only admitted into exhibit gallery shortly before the tour begins. As I talked about earlier, here is an image showing the queuing along 14th Street, and also the stairs, the abandoned stairs, that connected the sidewalk level to the former trolley station below street level. The trolley turnaround area is used today for employee parking. Also, you can see the loading dock. The loading dock below the bridge provides vehicular north-south connections for employees. The bridge facade is made out of clean metal panels supporting glass windows as part of the 1930s renovation. At the December 2009 meeting, the commission commented favorably on the overall concept designed for the Tour Bridge. Primarily, the commission recommended that the applicant continue to work closely with NCPC and various agencies to identify whether the public plaza along 14th Street could be restored to its original corbelinear configuration. The commission further recommended that the applicant work with NCPC to identify opportunities to improve pedestrian circulation and the overall streetscape along 14 and 15th Street. The applicant has responded to these requirements, which I will take you through momentarily. The project will improve pedestrian circulation, and the overall streetscape will restore in the original corbelinear plaza along 14th Street. The area of the bridge is 8,500 square feet, and it will include a new interior lobby and security processing. Area C, which you can see here in the image, is a VIP staging area, which is being developed As recommended by the commission, the design will restore the original corbelinear plaza, improve pedestrian circulation, and the overall streetscape. By increasing the size of the plaza, additional space will be provided for visitors to safely rest and view the Tour Bridge activities away from the general pedestrian traffic along 14th Street. The use of continuous paving in the plaza and the geometry of the curved walls defines the plaza as a point of arrival. The existing trees along the sidewalk will remain, but the design will provide larger planting beds near the bridge entrance. So, here and here. All the other vegetation will be replanted. The proposed design will include a total of 10 benches, providing a seating capacity of about 30 people. The proposal includes the partial elimination of the corpseite planter in this area in front of the Tour Bridge entrance, and features a bollard and pedestrian fence safety railing to provide security while enhancing the visibility of the Tour Bridge. The project will also include two new replicated columns, replacing the existing front bay wall enclosure. You can see the new columns in red in this area. The front entry wall will be set back one bay, so here, to match the original 1914 bridge extent and provide room for the corbelinear plaza. The entryway and the roof were extended by one bay east during the 1930s renovation, as highlighted in blue. The new columns will support the existing structure and the roof overhang, as represented by the red dash line, and the design will give visitors visual access to the original Tour Bridge structure and provide a more open feel similar to the 1914 open walkway. The project will provide a more flexible and convenient circulation for visitors. After being cleared by security at the Tour Bridge entrance, here, ticketed visitors will view a short film and then proceed up the escalator to the production areas. Visitors who are unable to get tickets for the escorted tour will be allowed in the facility to view exhibit areas along the bridge and purchase souvenirs in the gift shop along 15th Street. All visitors will be required to leave the complex by exiting through the main entrance along 15th Street. The existing exterior wall panels and glass windows will be replaced with a full-height glazed curtain wall system and insulated glass that returns the original 1914 cast-iron interior colonnade and trough structure to public view. There will be spandrel glass, as you can see at the top of the curtain wall, and louvers at service areas. As you can see, the design intent is to expose the interior ceiling structure from In this view, you can see the existing conditions and the proposed entrance bridge along 14th Street, showing the glazed curtain wall and the streetscape improvements. You can see the curtain wall, and then the streetscape and the corbelinear plaza. The proposed landscape palette consists of a combination of grasses and flowering shrubs and existing trees. And here, you can see some of the proposed streetscape elements, as well as the bollard and fence line configuration along the street, replacing the portion of the solid corpseite planter in front of the Tour Bridge entrance, and a fence to serve as a guardrail on top of the corbelinear wall. The applicant is still refining the design of these elements. Staff finds that with regard to the comprehensive plan, the project is consistent with the visitors, the federal workplace, and the preservation and historic features elements. These elements contain policies that encourage the federal government to support publicly-accessible visitor attractions on federal property and locate accessible activities within federal workplaces on public streets and other pedestrian access levels. The project is also consistent with the National Capital Urban Design and Security Plan objectives and policies to enhance the overall streetscape and operational security measures. Overall, staff is pleased with the bureau's proposed concept to modernize the existing entrance bridge and to restore the corbelinear plaza. However, staff has identified the following issues, and I will explain one by one in the following slides. The location and size of exposed mechanical systems conceals part of the historical trough structure, as you can see in the images on top, and affects the transparency of the glazed curtain wall systems and visibility of the structure from the outside. In the exterior renderings that I previously showed, the design intent was to expose and celebrate the original structure and make it visible from the outside. However, due to the mechanical dock size, represented in red in this image, the curtain wall will require opaque spandrel glass to cover the mechanical system, which will affect the visibility of the historic structure from the outside, as shown in the elevation. It's an opaque spandrel glass, so it won't show the structure. Therefore, staff recommends to modify the bridge glazing and mechanical system design to reduce the visual impact of the proposed mechanical soffit on the Tour Bridge facade. BEP has indicated that due to budget constraints, the stairs cannot be demolished at this time, even though they are not in use, and the design proceeds with including the stairs. The current proposal includes the demolition of a portion of the stairs landing, as you can see in this image, to accommodate the corbelinear plaza, as well as the addition of a low-external concrete wall, here, to make the stairs not accessible. Therefore, staff recommends to remove the chain-link fence along the abandoned stairs to reduce the negative visual impact from the sidewalk and create a visual identity at pedestrian and vehicular level. After preparing the EDR, the applicant has confirmed that the chain-link fence will be removed along with a portion of the stairs, the first segment of the stairs plus landing, and the remaining stairs will be enclosed with a low-external concrete wall. Another issue is the sidewalk barriers and bollards. These bollards, highlighted in red, are no longer necessary to secure the perimeter around leftover from a previous project. The BEP Southwest Gateway Project, approved by the commission in 96, included the construction of a planter wall along 14th Street, which you can see here in plant, and a short line of bollards running perpendicular to the sidewalk at either end of the planter. So, there were sidewalks, bollards here, and then here. Following the construction of these improvements, additional bollards were installed along the curve north of the planter in conjunction with the bollards at the Holocaust Museum in 2000. Therefore, staff recommends to remove these three bollards located perpendicular to the sidewalk along 14th Street because they are no longer necessary to secure the perimeter. The location of the proposed side benches feels appropriate, given the close proximity, strong visual connection to the Tour Bridge entrance, and the natural way in which people use the space, as you can see in the picture on top. The proposed freestanding rectangular benches located against the corbelinear wall create inefficiencies and conflict with the geometry. The proposed benches along the corbelinear wall should be more integrated into the architectural design in order to provide more seating capacity and a less cluttered space. Therefore, staff recommends to explore integrating seating into the design of the curved walls as a custom concrete cantilever bench along the corbelinear wall. And here is just an example of a corbelinear bench. During consultation, the applicant was considering to have one layer of bollards and another layer of pedestrian fence along this area. Staff suggested the integration of the bollards and pedestrian safety railing to create a single element on the street edge. Staff recommends that the proposed fence and guardrail should resemble the simplicity of the 1914 bridge railing and cast-iron columns, as you can see in this image, while the bollards should be compatible with the context. Therefore, staff requests additional information before final review regarding detailed drawings about size, spacing, material, and style of the proposed fence/bollard configuration along the street and guardrail. After preparing the EDR, the applicant has provided more information regarding the street-side bollards and fence and guardrail, which we will review after preliminary stage. Concerning ADA accessibility for the Tour Bridge, staff found that disabled visitors do not have similar access and exit points. The BEP intends to use the current entrance for all visitors along 14th Street once the project is complete, which is here. All visitors are required to exit along 15th Street, except disabled visitors, which need to be escorted back to the Tour Bridge along 14th Street to exit. So, disabled... People in wheelchairs need to exit along 14th Street. Since the 15th Street entrance is above a monumental staircase and does not have any accessible ramps, during construction, access to the Tour Bridge will be rerouted to 15th Street. So, it will be this temporary access. And BEP has indicated that the parking deck entrance, located in the north courtyard, which is used for employees in this area, will serve as a temporary ADA accessible entrance and exit point. Staff requests additional information before final review regarding ADA circulation, ensuring that people with disabilities are able to arrive on the side, approach the building, enter and exit as freely as everyone else. To conclude, the executive director's recommendation is for the commission to commend the applicant for working closely with NCPC, CFA, and the DC Chipo, and taking into account the suggestion to restore the public plaza along 14th Street to its original corbelinear configuration. To approve the preliminary site and building plans for the project with the following changes: remove the chain-link fence along the abandoned stairs, modify the bridge glazing and mechanical system design to reduce the negative visual impact of the proposed mechanical soffit on the Tour Bridge facade, and recommend that the applicant remove the three bollards located perpendicular to a sidewalk along 14th Street, explore integrating seating into the design of the curved entry walls, and note that any improvement located in public space will require a public space permit and coordination with DEDAT Office of Public Space Management, and request additional information prior to final review regarding ADA circulation during and after construction, and detailed drawings about size, spacing, materials, and style of the proposed fence and bollard configuration and guardrail. With this, I conclude my presentation, and I am available for any questions the commission may have. Also, the design team is here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, very much. Nicely done. Are there questions or comments for Ms. Lee before we move on?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. First, I want to commend the effort to put more seating, making seating available. I'm always a proponent of getting rid of the balance as much as possible and try to integrate seating for our taxpayers who come to see our city and our monuments. I think it's wonderful. What about... Is there any screening requirement here that has been integrated or not, in terms of security screening?
So, the BEP has indicated that we... In 2009, we had suggested to include the ticket distribution within the bridge, but they said that they prefer to have it along 15th Street with the current booths, and at this point, they don't have any plans to relocate the booths. They did mention that they prefer to have the ticket distribution off-site for security reasons. And yeah, currently, during the peak season, people are required to get a ticket here, and they are every 15 minutes, and then they walk with this orange line, they walk to the entrance.
Okay.
Yes, but at this time, they are not changing the ticket distribution system.
I was really more thinking of any other kind of security requirements, like magnet detectors, anything like that, or would that be handled only in the buildings that they may go with the tickets?
Yes, they will have... They do have metal detectors in the... Here, they have some x-rays and security screening. But they are still developing the floor plans. It's not final.
Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Ms. Right.
On the... Is that LID on the curb? Is that... That's not existing. I mean, there's something there now. Is that the planned... The landscape plan, such as it is? Do we know? I just... I missed it, if it's in there.
So, the current planter is smaller, so they are enlarging the planter. We did suggest that they could include any stormwater system, but they said that for budget reasons, they're just gonna increase the green space.
Oh, well, that's too bad. But otherwise, wow, the EDR nails it. I had... Those were my four issues. I mean, and you've already addressed them in your recommendations. Wow, this never happens. It's likely...
Congratulations.
It's gonna strike me soon. So, I'll shut up now.
In case you missed it, that's high praise.
Yes.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, the question before us is preliminary approval of the site and building plans. Is there a motion?
No.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's approved. Thank you, Ms. Lee, very much. The last item on our agenda, today has been a very short agenda, is we're happy to have back the very important project of the Kennedy Center expansion, and this is an information presentation that follows on the December actions that we took. And we have back Mr. Hart.
Just give me a second to wait for this to come on. Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The Kennedy Center has come to provide you with an update on the progress since this last time here in December. Before I introduce them, I wanted to give you a brief summary of the previous commission action, as well as items that the Kennedy Center will be responding to in their presentation. As you are aware of the last commission meeting, we had... Sorry, the December commission meeting, we had the Kennedy Center come in to give us... We reviewed the project at a preliminary design level. At that time, we approved the two land pavilions. They are... They are here, I'll point them out, but the commission did not approve the River Pavilion and requested additional information on the impact on boating. The commission also requested further design on the pedestrian connection from the expansion to the existing building, and additional information on the landscape elements in the, the new landscape that's being proposed, as well as some coordination with NPS on bicycle parking along the trail. The issues that the Kennedy Center will be responding to today are shown here. There are some overall issues, connections from the Kennedy Center to the, to the east, as well as the connection, as I noted in the last slide, between the expansion and the existing building, and then site circulation for pedestrians around the site itself. The landscape elements, as I noted in the, in the last slide, was, were really around some, bringing some interest in the, in the landscape, like art or interpretive signage, as well as the NPS, excuse me, as well as the parking for bicycles along the trail. With regard to the River Pavilion, the commission had some questions really around the kind of programmatic need to be located at its, where it's being proposed, and there were some environmental concerns regarding the floodplain and impacts, as well as the ability for the River Pavilion to deal with ice floes and debris coming along the river during storms that may occur. And then finally, there was the impact of the, on the boating community and what those might be, and to be able to see if there is some sort of design solution to, to help deal with that. And with that brief introduction, I would like to introduce Ms. Deborah Rutter, who is the president of the Kennedy Center, and she will be giving some brief remarks, and then we'll be presenting her team. Ms. Rutter?
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, and, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, thank you very much for having us here today. And you have in front of you a packet that has, gives you a brief summary of some of the materials that we have, so that you can have it at your resource. I have the privilege of being the new president of the John F. Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts. This is a great opportunity for us to give you a little bit more background on our thinking, what we have done since the time that we were here with you in December. I'd like to give you an insight on why the expansion is necessary overall, and in particular, why the River Pavilion is an integral part of that overall design. As I said, I'm new to the center, I'm brand-new to Washington, and in fact, new to this project. I've been here just since the beginning of September, but it hasn't taken me long to have a really clear understanding about the need for this proposed expansion. We at the Kennedy Center are very proud of the broad and wide range of performances and educational programs that we offer, and we strive to do that in a truly exceptional way. But those programs, all of them, the 2,000 programs that take place every year, are in desperate need for additional facilities that are more accessible and that support our statutory mission to increase opportunities for all people to participate in, to understand, and to experience the arts. This project, as designed, is, is truly aspirational for our city, our country, and goes well beyond being simply an addition to our existing facility. It encompasses an inspired urban design, integrating the existing resources and areas beyond our current site. Clearly, this approach is needed, given the geographic challenges that so many people know and talk about, that the Kennedy Center has faced since its inception. Its isolation was clear to Ada Louise Huxtable from the very beginning, when she wrote in the New York Times in 1971, the year we opened, quote, "Ever since the Potomac site was chosen in 1958, critics have pointed out that the inconvenience of the location, its inhospitability to pedestrians, its dependence on the automobile for transportation, and its isolation by encircling throughways." We all know we're living with that every day, aren't we? This challenge was equally clear to architects Stephen Hall and Chris McVoy, inspiring them to reach across the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway to the west to reconnect the center with the Potomac River, as Edward Durrell Stone intended with his initial scheme, which unfortunately was unable to be realized. The garden setting and the access to the pedestrian walkway along the river ensures that it will be more than just a destination for performances and events. The Kennedy Center, through the expansion and this garden, becomes a place for pleasure, exploration, and learning in an informal environment. As Stephen and Chris have presented to you previously, they have also proposed preserving an option to explore outreach to the center's east, envisioning a future bridge that would extend from the new entry pavilion located at the east of our site over the network of highways, and Chris McVoy will give you a very clear description of this. However, this would need to be a subsequent program to be delivered after additional funds and design approvals were obtained. By choosing to place most of our program below the landscape, our team has created inviting new green space, offering a level of intimacy that we currently have difficulty providing. For those of you who know the Kennedy Center well, we don't have this. It's hard scape by, by and large, and around our, our building. The design places three architectural features, pavilions, both in a landscape and as a floating facility, which allows us to offer new types of innovative and interactive programming. The River Pavilion plays an essential role in helping us realize our mission more fully. Crossing over the Rock Creek Parkway to connect with the Potomac River enables us to connect with our nearby Georgetown and National Mall neighbors. This also provides unlimited new opportunities to engage directly with the river. The program for the River Pavilion is composed of three primary elements. Our first priority is to more fully align with our principal mission of providing access to a broader variety of the arts. The lower level of the pavilion will house a flexible and intimate performing arts venue, allowing us to accommodate music and dance performances, as well as spoken word events like a poetry slam, the essence of which is lost in a large venue and greatly enhanced by the singular location on the water. The outdoor pavilion, which you can see there, can be used for a multitude of performing arts with bleachers and a river setting that is really unmatched anywhere, and really enhances the creative spirit. Sitting above the planned interior space on the River Pavilion is a year-round café that will provide a visually memorable experience on the Potomac. Finally, the River Pavilion allows us to reconsider how we may enhance the memorialization experience for our, I say it all the time, 35th president. As a memorial, we have successfully focused on the living aspect, which makes us unique amongst presidential memorials, operating both as the nation's performing arts center and honoring President Kennedy by commemorating and celebrating the importance of the arts in our culture. The River Pavilion provides us with a new space to memorialize his life and achievements, and a reflect, in a way, fitting location, his connection with and affinity for the water. Throughout the planning of this project, a guiding principle for the Kennedy Center has been the creation of something that is right for the wider community, the city of Washington, and visitors to our nation's capital. This goal guides us to choose an urban vision and a beautiful landscape, rather than just a simple addition of, for backstage facilities. That could be accommodated with something very uninteresting, just attached to the south, but this gives us so much more. It's also why we happen to choose America's great architects to create a one-of-a-kind experience, while keeping in mind the broader planning goals of this commission. Chris McVoy, our architect, joins us today, and he will speak to many of the specifics about the project and how it satisfies these goals. He will elaborate on how this inspired project brings the center closer to its mission, as well as yours, the NCPC's Monumental Core Framework Plan, and the Extending the Legacy Plan. Chris will also address the concerns brought to the commission at its last meeting. Please know, please know, that we take these concerns very seriously, and we are committed to finding mutually beneficial solution. We appreciate the discussions we've had and will continue to have with the interested parties, as we believe such dialogue with both our supporters and our critics will make our project an even better one in the end. We want to be good neighbors. We want to be a focal place for gathering of people of all manner of walk of life, and we will continue to listen and engage to create a great, great project. After Chris's presentation, we have asked Doug Scott of Baird Engineering, he is the marine engineer who has written the design criteria for the River Pavilion, and will, he will address the environmental issues that you've asked for, and how we are going to address the justified concerns. So, I'd like to ask Chris to join us now, and I'll be back.
Thank you, Deborah, and thank you to the commission for the opportunity for this dialogue. We very much appreciate it. As Deborah mentioned, from the beginning, when we started this project, we saw the importance of going beyond just the functional needs, that this was an opportunity to transform the presence of the Kennedy Center in the city into a more inviting, open, vital place, and that we could do this by a multi-fold approach. One, making new urban links. Two, having an architecture that's a smaller scale, a more humane scale, than the Edward Durrell Stone Building. So, we have three pavilions integrated into a landscape. They're almost domestic scale, to break down that scale to a more human scale. Three, to provide new kinds of spaces that Deborah spoke about, for performances, for encountering the arts, to reach new audiences. And four, finally, as Deborah mentioned, to extend the living memorial of President Kennedy to the, to the riverfront, to the water, so fitting for a president who loved the arts and connected to the water. I will focus on some details of what Deborah spoke about. First, speaking about the urban links, then talking about what we've done to learn more about the needs of the rowers, which we take very seriously, and to ensure that the River Pavilion does not compromise their safety whatsoever, and that can work with their, their events, which we completely support. And finally, to speak about environmental integration, how the River Pavilion's designed to address all the different environmental conditions, some of which are quite extreme, and stay in place and be a long-term piece on the river. Also, you know, early on when we started, before we made our first presentation to you, we, of course, studied the Monumental Core Plan and the Extending the Legacy document, and I just wanted to excerpt from Extending the Legacy where there's a, in the introduction or about the connection to the river, it says, "The historic awareness of Washington as a vital river city has been lost. Freeways, yeah, freeways slice across waterfronts, grand vistas are eclipsed by bridges and elevated railway tracks." We all know this problem, and as Deborah mentioned, the Kennedy Center is isolated by the parkway on one side and by, you know, the spaghetti highway spaghetti on the other. And it goes on to say, "Extending the legacy aspires to recapture that earlier vision and to offer Washington residents the same intimate connection to their rivers as Londoners and Parisians enjoy. With this new plan, the city's waterfront, most of which is publicly owned, will become a continuous band of open space from Georgetown to the National Armoredom. Some stretches will be quiet and pastoral, perfect for walks or picnics, while others will support festivals, concerts, and other urban activities." And we feel that the waterfront at the Kennedy Center is the perfect place to support concerts, festivals, and other urban activities, and that our plan then has a kind of synergy with, what we, we hope it has a synergy with the aims of the commission's plans. The three pavilions are oriented in different ways, out into the city, the entry pavilion to the east, the middle pavilion, we call the Glissando Pavilion, which turns toward the river, towards the entry into DC along the Roosevelt, Teddy Roosevelt Bridge, and of course, the River Pavilion floating in the Potomac. They're set within a landscape that's currently parking lots, re-envisioning the kind of front door to the Kennedy Center that you see coming in to the city, and creating these open visual links, as well as, I'll get into in a minute, actual pedestrian and bicycle links. To the east, we, the entry pavilion is conceived to have, to connect to a pedestrian bridge that will cross the highway spaghetti. It's not in the current scope of the project for budgetary reasons, but the entry pavilion is designed to accept a future pedestrian bridge, and it can either go into East Street or, our original thought was that it could connect actually across the National Peace Institute to the, to the mall, and we've studied, it's a thin thread, but it can be threaded through there, and we hope that that gets realized at a certain point. Between the pavilions, they're shaped, they're sculpted to frame views, and in this case, there's a view between the entry pavilion to the left and the Glissando Pavilion to the right of the Lincoln Memorial, which will be quite dramatic, and this is also the area that's the simulcast lawn. The north wall of the middle pavilion is a projection screen for events that are happening inside the Kennedy Center. What we know, of course, is there's a lot of activity inside the building, but it's not visible to the city because of how closed in that building is. So, the whole aim of this project is to make that creative life, extend it out into the city, make it more visible, and this is one of the key components, as well as the River Pavilion. The urban links, specifically the pedestrian and bike connections, we are connecting to the Teddy Roosevelt bicycle path link here, making a new connection through our landscape, and then across the bridge over the parkway to the River Pavilion, down either stairs or elevators to the riverfront. So, this is where we're linking to that bike path, which is, as everyone knows, becomes more and more active as we get more bicyclists, which is great, and this allows a direct connection to the riverfront path through our landscape, across the bridge, down the elevator stair of the River Pavilion, and onto that walkway. This bridge and the River Pavilion provide a key link from the Lincoln Memorial to the south, from Georgetown to the north, to the Kennedy Center proper, to events that are happening there, again, across that bridge, but also by having the River Pavilion integrated into that link, it creates opportunities for chance encounters of people walking or jogging by to encounter the events of the Kennedy Center, and an invitation to engage in that creative activity. And that becomes a very special place to have that invitation. It's a small-scale pavilion floating in the river, café on the roof, as Deborah mentioned, and, and performance spaces inside and outside below, and of course, at night, it gives a whole new life to the river. So, the River Pavilion, one of the benefits of making this link at the pavilion is the, the riverfront walkway is actually quite narrow at this point, so our elevator and our stair corps do not interrupt that. The park landscape continues uninterrupted, and this occurs out in the river. There's a very gentle gangplank that leads directly to the elevator and the stair, which then leads across the bridge and directly to the Kennedy Center with a covered walkway for portion of it, and also into the landscape where there will be activities. The circulation paths from the city then are drawn through the landscape, as I mentioned, coming across and to the Kennedy Center, or loops through our landscape. Here's that bike path connection to the River Pavilion, but also from people entering at the front of the Kennedy Center, they have visibility and are drawn through the landscape. The red dots represent where we're planning art or interactive events connected to music and performance in the landscape. So, this is a destination, a draw for families and other visitors, and for people who come before a performance, they can walk through the landscape and also come across to the café, the café of the River Pavilion, at the same level of the landscape. Working with the boating community, we were actually happy to hear the comments two months ago, so that we could engage and really understand the needs of the community, because in no way do we want to compromise their safety or their ability to use the river. We want to bring, allow more people to have that special quality of being on the river that they enjoy. So, we looked first at can we minimize the footprint of the River Pavilion, and the distance off the bulkhead is based on the depth of the water and that sort of thing, but we found we can still accommodate the flows of the tidal flow, so the river, and pull the River Pavilion in. So, we pulled it in four feet, and then we reduced the length ten feet away from the bridge to minimize its footprint while still providing the programs. And then we went out on the river, it was frozen that day, actually, so we got a good experience, with several members of the boating community that use both the Thompson Boat House, as well as the Potomac Boat Club, to hear firsthand what their needs are, how they row, how much space they need, which directions do they go, and that dash line is the path that we took in a boat with them, with them explaining the whole way how, how they use the river. And before we came through, we marked the outlines of the River Pavilion with boys in the water, so that they could see them themselves, and this is the southern tip of the River Pavilion. This is where it bends and becomes parallel to the bulkhead, and this is where it bends back and... back and the northern tip is right there. You can't see the boy in this photograph. And learning from them, we realized they, what they need and often use are two eight-person shells, which have a certain width, and then they need clothes between that width, and then they need a safety zone on either side. It's a, and then they have a row powerboat that the coaches are in. So they need a hundred-foot swath. And the safety rules for the river for rowers are that the northbound traffic, the northbound rowers should use either the first or the second arch. This is the arch of the Teddy Roosevelt Bridge. And the Thompson Boat Center rowers use this one primarily because that's closer to where they need to reach, which is here. But everyone is free to use either one and this goes up to the other rowers. So we looked at how the River Pavilion would impact that path and it does impact it slightly. It will, we feel it will take this hundred-foot, you know, I mean, there's no precise distance they row off of the shore, but it's likely that it would push it out maybe 10 or 15 But we feel that that, and it, we seem to be reaching some consensus with some of the rowers, that that's not a compromise to their safety at all. And if we look in more detail, here's the abutment of the bridge and here's the River Pavilion 80 feet off and there's more than a hundred-foot width clearance there. And then we did a series of views to show you the scale of the River Pavilion. And I think there, amongst at least some members of the boating community, there was a misperception about the scale of the pavilion. And one, one of the rowers commented, "Oh, it's much smaller than I thought it would be," which was encouraging. And yeah, you can see here that the 80 feet, these are very accurately measured, these boys, so these renderings are completely accurate. That's how far, this is the 80 feet off the bulkhead. And the river's quite wide at this point, in fact, much wider than it is further up where the boaters also have regattas and races and practices. So this 80 feet, this maybe 10 or 15 feet deflection of their current path is not a problem. Moving further south, this is the approach to the bridge. This, the two arches, the left and, these two arches are both available to rowers, but this is the arch the Thompson Boat Center people take and you can see that there's plenty of room to clear around it. And further south, likewise, there's plenty of room here in the River Pavilion. Also, the shape of the pavilion is tapered like the shore, which is beneficial and at night it will have lights to sure, ensure that it's visible and there's no chance of accident. Here's the connection, the bridge connection to the café, the elevator and the stairs down, Trigeneris, the gangplank up. And there was a question about the bike parking. We proposed this position for the bike parking, which will be developed in a kind of grass crete area and the parks, National Parks has said that they approve, that they like that position, so that we're happy to make that progress. And the nature of the performances here, just a little bit about the plan. It can seat about 140 inside, which is the intimate space Kennedy Center was looking for. Of course, it can expand outside. This is a pivoting wall, so you can, there are many configurations. But the combination of this special environment and a performance together, the environment can elevate the performance to be a very memorable experience, whether it's a jazz performance or contemporary dance on the river. The context and the open air and the river with the performance together, we are sure will create a special kind of condition, special memorable experience that will hopefully inspire future artists. Environmental integration, I'd like to hand it over to Doug Scott, who's of Baird Engineering. They've been on our team for a while, developing the criteria that the River Pavilion has to meet. So the boat builders will design the pavilion to meet these criteria.
Great, thanks, Chris. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Doug Scott. I work, I'm a principal in an engineering consulting firm called Baird and Associates. We specialize exclusively in coastal and river engineering, about 30 years of experience in designing waterfront projects, all kinds of structures in the water. And our role on this project has been to basically assess and define the environmental conditions that the floating pavilion must withstand. So as part of our work, we've actually produced two, two specific reports. The first one is, is an environmental criteria report. It basically summarizes the environmental conditions that are relevant to the design of the River Pavilion. So we're talking about the winds, the waves, water levels, the currents, and ice, of course. A key part of that work was to actually build a computer model of this piece of the river and look at the magnitude of the currents, particularly on the very extreme flood conditions. So understanding the currents at the, at the specific site. And then the second report that we've developed is called the Marine Technical Statement of Requirements. And this document really outlines the key design requirements for the proposed floating pavilion. It includes both the definition of the maximum conditions that the structure has to withstand, as well, it has other technical criteria that get involved in this design. This document really, one part of it identifies the type and experience level of the professionals that need to work on this type of design. So it specifies, for example, that a naval architect, coastal engineer, ice specialist, structural engineer, and geotechnical engineer need to be involved with the design. Further, it also outlines the, the specific rules, standards, and codes of practice that need to be applied or considered in the design and construction. And these documents are drawn from a variety of US and international codes as applicable. The design has to comply with a number of different combinations of extreme environmental conditions. One of these cases is, as shown here, the 500-year return period flood flow, in which water levels at this site could rise by some 20 feet. There are about 16 cases that need to be evaluated by the designer as a minimum. Another case, very important case, is actually the combined effect of 100-year return period flow, so an extreme flow in combination with 100-year return period ice condition, so very thick ice condition. And that really is the sort of design condition that really, that, this is one of the more critical cases in terms of loading on the floating pavilion. A key provision, as well, I should point out that, very important, the extreme flow conditions also need to be evaluated with, in terms of the potential debris impact on the structure itself. A key provision of the, of the technical statement requirements is that the River Pavilion must remain upright, floating, and moored, even under the most extreme design conditions. So it, it's acceptable, for example, to have repairable, minor elements to be repairable, like a, for example, some handrails, but the basic structure needs to remain upright, floating, and moored. And there's no doubt that the construction installation of a permanent moored, permanent floating structure in the Potomac River at the site, there's no doubt it's a challenging project. However, the design requirements that have been developed are stringent and they do take into account the challenges. Any design that's developed has to meet provisions of the statement of requirements. And at this stage, I'll turn it back to Chris, who will illustrate some of these design considerations. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Currently, the River Pavilion is out to bid and there are two strategies that are being explored by the bidders to, to build the pavilion. One is a kind of dock concrete, heavy concrete encased Styrofoam platform. It's a, it's a long-term, heavy-duty dock construction that then the building would be built on. And the other is to make a kind of boat or heavy, heavy-duty ferry out of an aluminum rib frame. And we'll be getting those bids back and evaluating which one best meets the criteria and has the long-term benefits. This is just to show that there's two strategies of mooring that are being considered. We've eliminated the C-Flex system, which I think we presented previously, which is a kind of flexible span system because it allows too much movement in the, too much lateral movement in the vertical water conditions that are required. So one is a strong arm, this is a strong arm, which is exactly what it sounds like. It's a telescoping arm that allows the pavilion to move up and down. So at the 500-year flood level, which is 19 and a half feet, it's completely moored and intact. The other system is a telescoping pier system, which has the same capacities. And with that, I'll help, head it, hand it back over to Deborah Rutter of the Kennedy Center.
So in closing, I hope we have given you some food for thought in response to some of the questions that have been raised. And I'd like to be really, really very clear with you about the importance that we all at the Kennedy Center and our team places on our role as a respectful neighbor, a member of our community, and of course, of the wider city and region. We really recognize that the success is tied to our ability to serve the needs and interests of our audience and we have begun, as you can tell, a concerted outreach effort, which will continue through this design, planning and construction of the project as a whole. So I hope that we have given you a full demonstration that we respect the concerns that have been raised and we are taking active steps to address those. I have made it really clear, as the person who feels the greatest ownership of this project, that I have told our team that the safety, the feasibility, and the future of the river and this pavilion on the river must be our highest priority. So you have my word that our efforts to satisfy every one of those stringent details that were just outlined will be met as we go into the design and engineering process in the next few months. If I may, just add a couple of other words. I believe that extending and connecting the footpath of history between the memorials on the Mall and the rejuvenated experience that you have in Georgetown on the waterfront is a really vital part of what we're trying to do here. And to connect the Kennedy Center rather than having it sit on top of a hill, removed from the rest of that activity, is really critical. So if I may, and this happens often in my life at least, I'd like to quote President Kennedy in closing, if I may. And he said, "If art is to nourish the roots of our culture, society must set the artist free to follow his vision wherever it takes him or her. Future artists and future audiences will experience the art in different ways, most especially now, if we can do that on the River Pavilion, which helps the Kennedy Center nourish both that freedom and the artistic expression so boldly envisioned by President Kennedy." This overall project is very important to the Kennedy Center and our city and it will serve future generations of art, artists, art patrons, and all the visitors who come to the Kennedy Center. So we hope we have come to satisfy your concerns and we're here to be in dialogue with you and answer any questions. We, we hope that we can come back in March for your approval. I'd like to say thank you for your time and your patience and your consideration of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Feedback from Commission members. There's no action item today, but they're updating us from December comments and if there's additional feedback, now's the time.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Griffiths.
Thank you very much. And I apologize if this has been covered before in other hearings. First, my comment was, I'm impressed with the amount of emphasis there are on the urban connections and urban links. I think that is absolutely critical, especially as we start reconnecting to the waterfront in different areas of the city. I had a technical question of how wide is the pedestrian bridge? I saw a dimension on one of those screens that frankly, my eyesight wouldn't allow me to read. And secondly, is that connection through the pavilion open to the public and consistently open?
The bridge is 10 feet wide, which we felt was, it's a balance of, you know, not wanting to make too big of an obstruction to the view shed and that sort of thing, but provide a comfortable width. And we felt that 10 feet is good for bicyclists and people passing.
In terms of the hours of operation?
Yes, we're, we are in the process of finalizing a plan about when we would need and for security purposes to close aspects of the River Pavilion. Clearly, all of the park is open. It's not closed off at any time, but we will have security that will find times when we won't be fully open to the public. But we're expecting that by and large during the day, it will be open just as we are open at the Kennedy Center from the morning through performances.
Thank you.
Other comments on the project? I'll say first, thank you. I think since December, the outreach to the rowing and paddling community has been extraordinary. So thank you for that. I'll say that I'm personally less concerned about the ice flow issues. I think those are adequately addressed. I think the, while I've been mindful of the paddlers and the rowers' concerns, I appreciate that you're coming to kind of the conclusion that I, as a layman had, that it perhaps wasn't an inordinate burden to the paddlers and rowers as I, as I was viewing it. So I haven't seen it as an inordinately harmful intrusion into the, into the paths. I will say, and I will underscore again, the comments that I personally made in December that I remain a bit concerned about the River Pavilion. Not at all certain that it's entirely consistent with federal policy and where the administration sees things. I'll note that just on January 30th, just less than a week ago, there was a new executive order on floodplain issues signed by the President. So I remain concerned about the pavilion from a policy perspective.
Is it appropriate? Say something?
Please, I'd love to have you.
So I'm perhaps not the best expert, but I'm going to try on that. So the new standard that was just signed gives agencies the flexibility to choose among different approaches to apply the standard. The constraints of our site, which is located within the 100-year floodplain, does, don't allow us to take advantage of this flexibility. Our compliance with the new standard is therefore the same as our compliance with the existing 1977 Executive Order for Floodplain Management, which is explicitly addressed by our October 2013 environmental assessment. Does that make sense?
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I would just say that the River Pavilion is actually the safest place to be in a flood because it rises with it. And as we've designed it, as I showed, it's, it will stay intact all the way up to the 500-year floodplain. And the building itself, we've designed, you know, just as existing Kennedy Centers in that, the whole Kennedy Center site basically is. We've been very cognizant about the flood issues and it's completely safeguarded to an elevation of 18 feet, three inches. And the highest recorded water level that there's been on that site was a foot and a half lower than that, 16 feet, nine inches, which was in 1985. So we're very cognizant of the importance of protecting the space and dealing with the rising water levels as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. With nothing else coming before us, I think that concludes today's meeting. We're adjourned.